Okay, um, there's a quick recap as per usual. Our study is entitled Last Case Study. And the aim of this study is to analyse Luke chapter 15 with the intention of addressing the parable of the lost things being the lost son, the lost coin and the lost sheep. We want to look at all the characters involved, see what lessons we can learn from these characters and how we can apply those lessons to our own lives. So, um, my brother Andre in his team, which I believe is so what we've been looking at now is the sheep. So we started with the sheep, the lost sheep. And we, we have been doing a case study. So we've been looking at the sheep diagnosing some of the issues that the sheep has that leads to it being lost. And the first issue that we brought up was scatterbrain syndrome. And what we found scatterbrain syndrome to be is a case or a disorder that leads to a lack of focus, a lack of clarity and a lack of direction. And that manifests itself in sheep in what is called flock behaviour, which is where the sheep follows blindly either the shepherd that is leading it or other sheep in the absence of a shepherd. And we looked at, we looked at the correlation that the implications of scatterbrain syndrome has to us as Christians, where we follow blindly and by following blindly, I mean, follow without appropriate guidance from the scripture. So what we started looking at was some prescriptions, having identified how serious it is to actually have this syndrome. We need to know what can we do about it? If I have scatterbrain syndrome, if I am following blindly, how can I address this? And the first prescription plan that we had put forward was Apollos acupuncture. And Apollos acupuncture was based on Apollos from the scripture, where we saw Apollos, a mighty man filled with knowledge and being taught of the scripture with zeal and with intent to use only scripture, found himself in a position where what he was teaching, what he was following was not complete, was not necessary at the time period. Um, and he had to be retaught, he had to be placed on the right path. And we found from Apollos that in spite of all these wonderful things, he was, he subjected himself to being corrected. Um, so Apollos acupuncture was essentially, um, not allowing or status or skills or talent or intentions or reveal to hinder us from being corrected and from moving in the right direction. So we found that that was Apollos acupuncture. The next prescription that we looked at was the Priscilla patch. And we garnered this corrective measure from the same set of scriptures that we found Apollos acupuncture from. And this was when Aquila and Priscilla, we use Priscilla because it, the P goes with patch. We're not ignoring Aquila in this situation, but if we use Priscilla. They took him aside, so this was after Apollos was preaching and teaching in the synagogue. But what he was teaching lacked completeness. So Aquila and Priscilla pulled him aside and they taught him more accurately or exactly what he needed to learn. And from that, we drew some lessons about the Priscilla patch, about how we should approach others in giving correction. So the last, this was the last slide that we looked at, there's a quick recap. So I approach you having properly listened to slash understood your position. So it's the most important thing about correcting others is that first you need to actually know what they're saying or understand what they're saying. So if you don't understand, then seek clarity from that individual. And please note that said from that individual, not somebody who claims to know what that individual's position is. Get it from the source, try and understand. Next, um, I approach you in a manner that minimizes embarrassment or awkwardness. And please note, I say I approach you because this is for me. And similarly, I would like you to take it on as a personal thing. So rather than thinking about how people should approach you, take it as a how I should approach people first. And then hopefully it will rub off on them. So I approach you in a manner that minimizes embarrassment or awkwardness. Remember, the aim is to, to, to bring them to the right side. And you want to create an environment that is as conducive to correction as possible. Them being embarrassed, them feeling awkward, them being ready to get defensive is not going to aid them in hearing your message and applying your message if your message is correct. Next, I approach you intending to enlighten or clarify, not to show up or ridicule. So our intention should be for the person to find out why what they're doing may be wrong and change those ways, not for me to, to show up the fact that you were wrong or to make fun of the fact that you were wrong. So the intention is very important with our approach. And if we recognise that our intention is wrong, that is something that we need to thought out before we approach. And then lastly, I approach you with the word of God in its perfection. And in its perfection here being twofold. One, ensuring that I have properly understood what the Bible is saying on the subject matter that I'm using to correct. And two, having ensured that I am applying the proper context and content of said scripture. So I'm not just dragging a scripture that I feel supports my position so as to use to correct you, but that I have properly looked at the scripture in its content and context. So those are, those are the sub points that we drew from the Priscilla patch. So, um, we have an exercise that we are going to do this evening. And we're going to be, we're going to be working together to see if we can get through this one. Please note that as per usual, once we have exercises, points will be given to teams for their participation. All I need is to hear one person from the team speak at one particular time and the team will get the extent of the points that are ascribed to it. Alright, so what we are going to do in this exercise? So we, we just, we just did a, a breakdown of the Priscilla patch. We're going to look at some statements. So these are fictitious statements that I created. But please do not presume that somebody made these statements at some point in, in their communication with me or otherwise. If there is any likeness to conversations that have been had with anyone in this group, it is merely coincidental. This is, this is not something that I'm drawing from my own knowledge. Alright, so what we're going to do, we're going to be seeing, we're going to be seeing these situations and I'm going to need you to help me to see how we can make them more palatable in addressing the issue that is being brought up. So we're going to start. So I'm going to tell you vaguely what is being addressed. And then I'm going to tell you, ask you to show you the actual statement and then help me to fix up the statement essentially. Alright, so first one, addressing long-winded messages. Brother Ezekiel, is Energizer battery charging mode when you preach? You just keep going and going, our sister Esther in the middle of the members meeting. How can we fix this statement to make it more palatable? Or what are some of the issues with this statement in the first place? Or this means of correction? Alright, that's Sister Sandra's hand, you can, you can go ahead.
Before Sister Sandra, this is a, this is a point about response.
Yes, David, it's a point of a response.
Alright, so the, the approach that we should use is a sandwich approach. Um, so now it's all positive face, so something, something positive. They could say, boy, brother Ezekiel, the, the message was really interesting. And the 13th point was really good. Um, I wish you didn't have the first 12 to go with it. Uh, but that, that, that 13th point was really good.
Alright, just start with something good, that's it. Hello, David?
Start with something good, say the criticism, end with something good.
Okay, start with something good, say the criticism, end with something good. Even if the something good is a repetition of the first something good. Cause that's, that's what I got that from, from yesterday, but no, I like it. So is that fine? If I repeat the first good as the last good, that's okay.
If that's all I can manage, then well.
Alright, David, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other issues with, any other issues we see with this, um? So David points out that nothing good was said, nothing good was said. And we can't help, we can't help individuals to swallow more bitter pills by lacing it essentially with something sweet. So say something nice, saying something nice or something, um, good about what was done can help to make it easier to deal with. Um, anybody else? Anything that we see wrong? Go ahead, brother Akon.
Uh, yes, especially when we talk about like criticisms or perhaps, you know, things, issues we have with the way someone teaches a lesson or provides a, you know, a sermon. Um, having that common ground is usually helpful to help people sort of palate the criticism. So in the situation like this, bringing up why you, why you're correcting them, you know, if it's for the benefit of how they teach. So, you know, brother Ezekiel, you know, I love your, your energy and, you know, how in-depth you are. But perhaps it'd be easier for people to stay focused if the message were shorter. So finding that common ground, I'm trying, I want your message to be the best message it can be. And I think I have some advice that might help you.
Excellent point, excellent point, brother Akon. And as we said, one of the things, one of the things when we look at the Priscilla patch is the intent. And if your intention is for them to preach in a more effective manner, quote unquote, then providing them with what made it ineffective is a way to get, to help them. So as, as, so you, you bring up, you bring up the, as you said, you use the same sandwich method. You bring up something good, you try and find something good. And that points to the first part of, of the Priscilla patch. Understanding and having listened to. For the most part, no matter how poorly someone does, if you had listened clearly and understood, there would have been something positive that you could have taken away. And that can encourage the person in understanding that, hey, it is, I didn't listen to attack you. I didn't listen to, to berate you. So don't feel like, boy, this is just me trying to bring you down because I actually have things that I have taken away from the message. So excellent, excellent point. Um, I'm seeing a comment.
I don't have a hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so verse. Alright, so my take is, um, that Sister Esther shouldn't have raised this in a members meeting. I think that this is a discussion that should be had one away with brother Ezekiel. That's the first point. I don't think that this is the kind of thing that you raise in a members meeting. That definitely would be embarrassing, which is one of the things you talked about. And you don't want to embarrass, I don't see how he would feel to be embarrassed having said in a members meeting. So that's the first point, no matter how wonderful, how good, you know, and the sandwich. Cause people know how to show away the bread now and, and look for the meat. Um, so the first thing I would say, and then this sandwich thing can work afterwards. That, you know, um, a discourse as to all the things that you talk about, attention span, those kinds of things. But that is off in a corner. Nobody would ever know that brother Ezekiel would have been spoken to until the next time he comes and speaks, gives you a three-point sermon and get it done in 20 minutes.
Alright, excellent point, brother Smith. Um, before we go to Sister Smith, I'm seeing a comment from Sister Margie saying, the tone seems a bit abrasive as well. I don't even know if a bit is necessary, this is, this is pretty abrasive. This is a pretty abrasive tone. So, um, the way that the message is brought across, the medium, um, is, is, is also a significant factor in regards to how, um, things are received. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
Yes, brother Stephen. Brother Smith said the very thing I was going to say. So I just thought it would be embarrassing for brother Ezekiel, you know, to speak with it to him like, like that, kind of talking down to him. I would probably say, brother Ezekiel, can I have a word with you after the members meeting? Something to that effect. And then, you know, I would make my point to him.
Alright, wonderful stuff.
Well, this is brother Smith, he's still on the phone.
Sure, if we appoint, if you give points for that.
But yes, um, we, a lot of the time we quote the passage, speaking the truth in love. But, um, I think sometimes we fall short on the application of the passage. And, and love is kind. And kindness speaks both to gentleness as well as usefulness. So when you speak truth in love, you speak it in a useful manner. So if you don't see what you're saying being of use to the person, then maybe how you are saying it or what you are saying needs to be altered to the point where it is useful. Alright, next, next line, so addressing modest dress. Sister Eve, you have to ensure that you move up a dress size as you put on weight. It gets a little tight in the lower part, you see? You don't want the visitors to think you come church to look man. What, what is wrong with this kind of approach? Or what alteration could have been made to make this a little easier to swallow? Or is it, is it fine? And, and nobody don't want.
Get that lip cross ahead, but.
Does it, does it matter the gender of the person making the comment?
Uh, I'll, I'll leave that one over. I presume that the men would be, I like to be smarter than, than to try and make these comments. So I presume that, I presume it would be a, a young lady to another young lady. Any, any, any ways, anything, anything wrong here? Or any ways that we would fix this or is it a subject that you just leave alone?
Come first, come, come.
Go ahead, I don't know if this is David or Sandra, but it's chapter, all the same.
Yeah, I said anything was wrong, but everything is wrong with it. Um, how, how to, how to correct it? I'm not too sure, but if it was a man, if, if I was seeing a woman with a dress that was small and I, then I tell Sandra, go talk to her, I wouldn't try to do it myself. Um, that was a lady.
That's a good point, David. So, um, finding, remember we said we want to make it, remove as much embarrassment or awkwardness. So if you recognise that you are not the best person to address the situation, then try to find someone from whom the message is easier to access. Excellent point, continue David.
Um, if I was a lady, I stuck, I don't, I don't, I don't know what I would say, Stephen.
Alright, so, um, I don't know if we can find, cause when I was looking at this, I was like, how do you? Is this something that you can say? But what I can speak of in regard to what was wrong, when I was, I was reading it, I said, this feels passive aggressive. And I think sometimes we need to be careful of the kinds of tones or attitudes that we, that we subtly think into or, into or attempt to correct. Because even if it is not necessarily our intent for it to come out, sometimes the thought that we have, if we aren't careful, will seep into the way we say things. Even if there's nothing wrong with the words per se, which isn't this case clearly, sometimes the tone and is, is, is one that is passive aggressive. Go ahead, Annabelle.
Sometimes a statement like that, clearly the person don't have much tact. Um, to even, and the worst part about this is a conclusion that is drawn at the end, that the person that comes church will look man. Um, I just go put myself in a situation, if somebody came and said that to me, I don't think I would have a good response. So maybe I would speak to somebody else about, um, how I feel about that statement. Because maybe reacting in the situation or at that time wouldn't be the best thing. Um, so maybe I could speak to somebody else, even talk to that person who made the statement to the person.
Alright, thank you for a, a more personal, um, look at the, at the situation. Um, I'm seeing where, not sure if this is the tenants, the person that they know. Um, so be careful of attempts at humour. And that's, that's, sometimes we try to find a roundabout way to get to where we want to go, but that makes it worse. Sometimes, um, I guess, being honest and trying to be as kind as possible is a better way than trying to, to be pretty with the words and ending up making, making it worse. Go ahead, brother Akon.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, first of, in the statement, the fact that weight was brought up is, you know, completely unnecessary. It's real, that's not the issue, right? Not that someone's gaining weight, it's that their clothes don't fit. So that'd be the first thing that gets struck, that, you know, only serves to further in the embarrassment. But like you said, sometimes, um, like if the attempt is to not be awkward, at least minimise the awkwardness, minimise the rudeness. Um, it doesn't mean that direct isn't appropriate. Sometimes just being direct is the easiest and least awkward way. Simply stating, uh, you know, hey, sister, can I speak with you? I just wanted to mention, you listen, your clothes are too tight. It's not, you're not presenting the way I know you want to. And then, and then going from there. But sometimes being direct might be a little uncomfortable, but it might show the most love and compassion into, let's just address an issue, acknowledge that it's not the most comfortable issue and see if we can, you know, help and improve.
Alright, thank you very much, brother Akon. Um, go ahead, Sister Smith.
Yes, I think that approach is just totally wrong. Women are very sensitive about their weight. So you have to know how to approach it. How I would do it is I would speak to the head of the ladies group and I would say, maybe we could have a discussion on dress code in the church and deal with it that way. So that you don't just target one person and embarrass them.
Okay, so that's a, that's an excellent, excellent suggestion there, Sister Smith. So, um, rather than necessarily tackling one person, having that person feel that, you know, they're the target. Um, if you address the situation in a group setting, um, at least you give the person the opportunity to have access to the information and with hope that you will see the change. I guess if it keeps happening after that, then you decide, boy, what is the way forward? But starting in, in a fashion like that sounds like an excellent, excellent way to go about it. Go ahead, brother Andre.
Yes, um, I would want to suggest that we build a relationship with the person first and foremost, rather than finding fault with the person. It can't be that the first interaction with them is, becomes fall offending. So if you build a relationship with the person where they even, where, where, where we're in so doing, we're in so doing, uh, uh, even with the best tact and the best words and the best, and the best everything, um, it, it, I can lessen, I use that word. It can definitely lessen the, 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 the approach and how the person feels. Um, because they believe that your motives are in the right place. But the only way that can happen is unless you build a relationship with the person.
Excellent point, brother Andre. And I guess it is, I see some comments in, in the group that align itself with what you're thinking. For example, um, David said sometimes people cannot afford any better or bigger clothes, could try to tactfully offer help. I see Margie saying this one is tricky. If the person is gaining weight and not in a position to afford increased dress sizes, it will be embarrassing as well. If the, if you are in a position where you and the person have a close relationship, this is a discussion that is easier to have than if this is a person who, boy, is a hello, is a hello goodbye kind of a church interaction. So the closer you are to the person, um, then the easier it is. And, um, I think David had pointed about asking Sandra to ask. I think that aligns with what Tammy is saying, that is a gender issue. Um, and she said, I'm challenging the man providing this comment to her. Um, and I said initially, I don't think that this is something I'd like to hope, that this is not something that a man would say. Um, but also I think that if you, if you see this and you think it's an issue, hopefully you know someone, but if you're not as close and you think that it needs to be addressed before you can foster that kind of relationship. So as they bring it up yourself, I would like to hope that the church is set up enough that you would at least have access to someone you think is close enough to that person to discuss it with. And please note, not in a gossip fashion, like, yo, you see what, you see, you see how this, this team member that look like at the bus? No, in a manner that is, is with intent to help, intent to assist.
Um, okay, so can I get a word in? I'm trying.
Man, go ahead, brother, go ahead, brother.
I was trying, alright. Um, one other thing that you have to be careful as well, that, that we're not busybodies, you know? Um, so unless the situation is really bad, uh, maybe one option as well is to, um, allow it, you know, I'm just saying to you, sometimes we set ourselves as police to look at every little thing and to jump at others when maybe big mood in our eyes, but forget the evening mood. And I'm just saying to you, be careful as well that we're not just jumping around to, um.
My excellent brother Smith, that was one of the things that I wanted, I wanted to bring up on thankfully abroad, it's my recollection. Ensuring, remember the first point was ensuring that you understand or are clear. Be sure that your definition of modest dress aligns itself with Bible. You don't want your perception as to whether this is something that needs correction or not to create a massive issue. I have been in sadly congregation where visitors, I, I would bring a visitor to church. Within myself, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, boy, this is probably the best kind of attire to wear. But this is someone who hasn't come to church, in as far as I know, that don't ever go to church. I just brought up the invitation, they're like, sure, I'll go to church. I was like, you know what? Invite them, even the first thing you should, they can't say, boy, you know, they never come, they never day in a church. Someone came to me while I was sitting down and they were sitting down beside me. And I, I presume it was an attempt to whisper, but it was very loudly said. And said, Steve, this is Stephen, oh, you should bring girl in at the church wearing that. And she heard everything that was said. And that was the last time that she came to church with me. And as much as I probably would have said, hey, maybe the attire could have been a little more culturally appropriate. We, we have to be careful that as brother, as brother, um, Smith said, we don't turn. We we have to be careful that as brother, as brother, um, Smith said, we don't turn, um, police in in the church. This is someone that you have never seen in the in the church. I would presume that the first thing that you would like to comment on the individual is, thank you for coming. It's glad to see you. I mean, it's great to see you. I'm hoping that, boy, you come again. And after having created some rapport, then that's something that you can address. But we we have to be, have to be very careful that, um, we we don't get, we don't get caught up with the the things that are of lesser importance and lose out on the things that are of greater importance. Um, seeing some comments, um, Engel said, would this be bad if you find fault and bring someone else into the crease and the fault? Um, the guy dressed that slightly, Kirk saying, sometimes proper edification slash teaching of scripture most times will do the convicting and correcting. So, um, excellent point there, Kirk. Sometimes we we get a little too too intimate with the with the problems rather than providing the solution and hoping that the person takes it themselves. Um, alright, moving, look like this activity great because Bible class, but excellent points coming out, I don't mind that. Addressing lateness, alright. My notice that ever since you get woman, you not stop reach church late. Is what we not do at night time, I do so at night time, ask brother Jerusalem, this should be as he passed the collection plate. Anything wrong with this? Presume the silence was the English, the timing is poor, so. Is the passing of the Lord's support a better timing, Engel? Or is it, is it in church in general? I'm joking, I clearly.
I think the timing he's talking about is the lateness.
Um, so yes, but the the place, the place where this con- conversation should be had, um, is just the, outside of it being wrong or right, the place that it it shouldn't be while you're collecting, anything within worship. This this shouldn't be the kind of comment. Um, anything else wrong? There was the out of order from sister, sister and brother in dollar. Assumptions, but this was one of the things that I wanted to bring out in regards to, or how we correct. I think a lot of the times we draw a conclusion, oh, Natasha, we draw conclusions and we then presume those conclusions to be correct and use that as ground for correction. Have to be very careful. So the test that is asked and listened for. A simple, I realize that you've been late a few times at church, is everything okay? You have been transportation issues, et cetera, or just asking a question and allowing them to say what the situation is, is is a means that can be used. Natasha, I see your hand, go ahead.
Um, I think this is an issue that our evangelists would have identified, um, maybe one or two times in the past. And it's similar to the approach that Sister Smith suggested earlier, that the ladies group could have, um, uh, a meeting on dress code. So there have been instances where before or after the worship service or even, um, in members meeting, Brother Grenell would make a a general announcement or implore us to try to be on time, prioritize worship and stuff like that. Um, and members who are occasionally or generally late, you don't need to point any fingers, we all know, we see them coming in late, so you can, you can know that this is that being directed to you. And for persons who might feel like they want to start coming late, then, you know, it's already, it's already addressed.
Okay, okay, excellent point, Natasha. Um, the tenants, go ahead.
Um, I I I I think that we don't always have to go to root of announcements and meetings, one on one conversations can be had and sometimes we're useful, but I don't know, when I read all these examples, it is more than something wrong with tact. It it sometimes speaks to and and I know they are made up examples, Stephen, but I've heard close enough to these different things being said, either direct to people or or through whispers in my previous life. It goes, it goes to the heart of the person saying it. So yes, I can try a pretty top and stuff, but what is in their mind, what are they thinking for those kinds of thoughts even come out? Um, so I just think that sometimes, oh, I address how people say things, we we're dealing with the symptom and the cause. And maybe we need to look at that, that, that there's a fundamental level of cruelty and maliciousness to some of these things that I said.
Excellent point, David, excellent point. Um, uh, it it's, and as you said, as much as I tried to to bear to the more ridiculous, so as to remove the likelihood of stepping on anyone's coin or anything that they have personally had to deal with, it is a lot of these things, or close enough to these things, have been said a lot of the time with a laugh or a chuckle. So as to disguise it as humor. But when you think about what is said or what is brought up, you wonder wh- what really is the intent or the heart of the individual, um, bringing that up? Alright, um, I think we've gotten. Go ahead, Engel, go ahead.
But I I what's, so some persons though, depends on the relationship that they may have with an individual. They may lean towards humor, may not be as, as, as some of these comments are, but may as we discussed before, may may use a little humor, not as harsh as, well, not harsh as this, but to lighten or to to carry, to 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 carry over whatever message is being said. Just thinking that that is an approach that would help to get get a particular message across. So that 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 the person has a genuine heart and a genuine intent to help and choose chooses that method. But not, but not in the harsh ways or you're you're highlighting it.
Okay, now, a good, good point, and it goes back to what, um, brother Andre had said about the relationship that you have with the person. For example, I know, say, if I wear a pants with too tight come at church, David is not going to, David is not going to need to 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 be very, very, um, meek and 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 nice with with the statement. Because he knows that I'm not going to be offended by his approach. So knowing the person to whom you are trying to give the correction or making the comment plays a significant part in the type of comment that you make. But as you said, Engel, the tone is also important. You need to know that the reason you're making the comment doesn't have some some form of insidiousness hidden in it. And the devil, the devil knows how to use the excuse that you need to correct them or you need to reproach them to slide in some snide or some sarcastic or sardonic comment underneath the 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 correction. A little jab where you can hear, man, that one they hurt them, but you didn't even realize that that slipped in. So we have to be careful. Go ahead, Kirk.
Um, yeah, you're hearing me?
Yeah, man, I hear you.
Yeah, I'm kind of putting a, uh, an example there that I want not to do. Uh, I I, there was a, there was a lady at a church and she she pretty much late every every Sunday. Um, and I, I took it upon myself to go to her to say, you know, um, you can, I don't remember how I put it, but obviously I put it wrong because she took it wrong. Um, you know, you can be earlier, something to that effect, you know? And, um, I I offended her very badly, very badly. She she didn't want to come back. Had to beg her, beg her, please, I'm I'm sorry. And, you know, just looking back and even with this, um, this lesson, you know, I could have offered a ride, you know, because she didn't live far from me. Um, I could have found, um, you know, inquire to find out, you know, is there an issue? Um, is there something I can help with, you know, some some to that effect? But, um, as I shared earlier in the chat, sometimes we're not, we're not, um, inclined to invest time in people to find out if, when, why, how, context, et cetera. We just kind of wanted, just kind of just throw something out there and move right along, you know? So, um, yeah, it was, it was, it was a way not to do it again.
Alright, good, good point, good point, Kirk. And, um, I think that's, that's one of the takeaways. And that is why when I was, when I was looking at the Priscilla approach, everything came before I approached you. So the intention is, give it thought. Ensure that you look at it from every angle, because if you do it the wrong way with the best intent, sometimes the consequences are very difficult to undo. So if you have any doubt, figure it out, ooh, that rhyme. Go ahead, brother Andre.
Uh, just, um, maybe another little rhyme thing to, um, investigate before you inform. And and the rule of thumb is to do so seventy percent of the times before you start to tell people what to do and how to do things. So investigate to get a context, and once you learn the context, then you're in a better position as to how to have the conversation.
Excellent point, brother Andre, excellent point. Goes back to the first line, clarity and understanding. If there's any doubts as to your clarity or understanding of the situation, as brother Andre said, investigate. Don't don't say, boy, my seven, my eighty percent sure enough, I may run with it, no. Once there's a one percent meeting, if it's ninety nine percent, go and get the one percent from the person. Alright, we have some, some final statements. I don't know if there's anything new to be said, but I'll just go through them, and if you have any comments, you can, you can make it. If not, we move on. So I'm addressing gossip. Brother Ham, tell me, say, sister B, can tell him, say, you tell her, say, I'm gonna burn up the macaroni and cheese when I make for the church trip. You love, that should be a love, I don't know if that's, you love chat people business. So, um, addressing scripture misrepresentation, greet who with a holy kiss. Stop twist scripture for your own evil agenda, lightning not go strike you. Addressing mally slash unforgiveness, so wife made the teeth your money last week. How much time you want me to say sorry? You have to forgive me or God not forgive you. Obey. And addressing presenting, brother Job, see one English book here, my tired for years, I'm a blessing bestowed. So most of the things that that we had brought up initially can be aligned through through, um, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Sister Teta. I mean, Tommy, sorry, go ahead, Tommy.
Even when you see our names, you still mix us up, Stephen.
Oh, yeah, you think that was accidental?
No, I I thought that, um, the second point, addressing scriptural misrepresentation, needed a little pause there. Yeah, I find that sometimes it's not even, I mean, I think that we just need to look at how we we look at, we we discuss it, sometimes you have persons within the congregation that are not mature Christians, and even sometimes for mature Christians who are questioning things and trying to learn more, I find that sometimes our approach, even sometimes it's it's not even what we see, but it's our body language and so on, that kind of pickles any kind of further discussion. So it is something that we need to look at if we are trying to be, as we say, we try to be like the virions that are searching the scriptures daily, and we're trying to learn more.
Boy, oh, every time that class, you jump ahead of me in regards to what we're covering. Why, Tommy, you have access to this line?
Well, okay then, self pause.
But now, man, excellent, excellent point. And I guess, yes, that I I don't want, if there's any other comments on anything else, don't feel because I went through all four, that that means they can't make any such comment. Um, the way that we respond, a lot of the times gives the impression as to whether we are open for further discourse or not. You don't want, in an attempt to correct someone, you you bring it across in such a dismissive fashion that even if they were initially willing to take correction or to seek clarification from you, they no longer are interested in what you have to say. So you know, that that defeats the very purpose of the correction. And I guess we need to make sure that we we know wholeheartedly what the purpose of the correction is. To get the person on the right path. The person not willing to listen to you, then you won't be able to provide a right path for them. Um, any other, go ahead, brother Smith.
I'd like to go back to the gossip part. I don't want to, it's not exactly the statement that you have there, but I think I'd like to share two thoughts related to it, two sides of it actually. One of them is, um, that we have to be careful, um, that when we, when somebody presents information that we shared with somebody, let us say I told you something in confidence. From Engel, um, don't assume assume that you you are the one that told Engel. That happens frequently and can cause a big problem. Um, I can share an example, um, re- related to something fa- fa- practical, actual happened. Like, I I preached a sermon once, and there were two persons in the congregation who were actually, um, trying to cooperate in a little business. And one of the persons came back to say, well, okay, you know, um, the thing is off, because the proposed partner, um, thought that, uh, he was telling me things, because the things in the sermon were so directly applicable that the other person couldn't believe that, um, it was not, um, as a result of, you know. Alright, the other possibility as well, know that it, that we can actually pass on information with good intention. Thinking, you know, it's not, you wouldn't call it gossip, but it could also be dangerous. And if somebody might come with us to us with an issue, and we believe that, um, oh, boy, this is, you know, I need to get some advice on this or whatever it is, and then we go to somebody who is seeking advice, um, from, but in its, in essence, we carrying the information further, if you understand what I'm saying.
No, man, I get what you're saying, brother.
I'm aware of something, um, that you are doing, and I'm saying, now, what do, what do, let me go ask Sister Smith about this, whatever it is. So in effect, I have moved it one circle further. So even though I am not gossiping and and moving the information, so we have to be careful. Even when we have a good intention, that, um, we're not carrying the information further than it needs to go.
Alright, excellent point, brother. Well, excellent double point, brother Smith. Um, any other comments? We're not in a rush, we can take with time. I'm sure David is not complaining. Um, any other comments? Alright, let's, let's, let's move into the prophet, Tommy's aspect. So the third, the third prescriptive method is what we call the bury and branch and plant. So, um, I need a reader, so hands for a reader, please. Alright, that's the dollar from verse. Go ahead, Dollar.
Then the brethren immediately sent Paul and Silas away by night to Berea. When they arrived, they went into the synagogue of the Jews. These were more fear minded than those in Thessalonica, in that they received the word with all readiness and searched the scriptures daily to find out whether these things were so. Therefore, many of them believed, and also not a few of the Greeks, prominent women as well as men.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much, Alan Willred. You you got your point, sir. Um, before we get into this password, go ahead, Sister Smith. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
Sir, let me unmute the Priscilla patch.
Alright, excellent, excellent.
Thank you. Ten points.
Not exactly ten points, but you get your point. I've seen the internet working well at this middle evidence. Alright, so we're looking now at the burial and brain transplant. Let's look at these scriptures more in depth to see what we can gain from this particular prescription. So the first, verse ten, it says, then the brethren immediately sent Paul and Silas away by night to Berea. When they arrived, they went into the synagogue of the Jews. So what are some of the implications here? So we know that there were some Greeks there based on the passage, but it also said that it wasn't just Greek, it was, there were Jews, a lot of Jews who were converted. And here we have Jews. The implication, when you're a Jew, you're born into, you're born into the religion. So this is a lifetime of belief. Your parents passed down um the teachings. You, you, you worship in the synagogue. This is a lifestyle and a lifetime belief. Um, what are some implications here? One of the implications is that if you accept, if you accept um that this message that is being presented to you by Paul and Silas is actually the truth, that what you are currently following has, has fallen short. Then this means that there is going to be drastic lifestyle change. You're going to have to change your behaviors, you're going to have to change the views and the beliefs that you have had for an extensive length of time. Synagogue. So they went into the synagogue. How is this significant? So firstly, this is the sacred place of worship for the Jews. So it's not like, it's not like Christianity where our meeting place is not as, is not holy, but us meeting is holy. So we are the body. At that time, the synagogue itself was a holy place. So you come now with your, as far as a lot of people would say, heresy, in our sacred place of worship. As far as I'm concerned, I am less inclined to accept what you have to say. Harder for me to swallow my pride when you're coming to my building. If me, I hear a talk on a bus, then I probably have more, I'm probably more inclined to say, okay, maybe you're talking sense. But around all my Jewish brothers, in our sacred place of worship, you now come and present this I, this new thing that I am not aware of or have not been following, feels like I have more reason based on the location to be disinclined to accept what you have to say than if it were somewhere else. Jump to verse eleven, and it says, these were more fear-minded. So the word fear-minded, I think this is Eugene, maybe mispronouncing it, means well-born, well-born. And it can be used literally or figuratively. Literally, it means high in rank of a noble family. Figuratively, it means generous or noble-minded. So the word noble-minded means having an honorable or generous character. Concerned with what is right. So it said that these, that was the mindset of these people. They were concerned with what is right. They had an honorable and generous character. And this clearly played into the kind of response that they provided. Let's keep looking at some of the other verses. So it says, these were more fear-minded than those in Thessalonica, in that they received the word with all readiness. So the word received here, that's the Greek word that is used, it means to receive. It says of something offered in speaking, teaching, or instructing, to receive favorably, to give ear to. So to receive favorably, meaning to, I am giving you an opportunity to present this to me. I'm not stopping you, I'm not barring you, I am not presenting um a difficult situation or a hard ear. I am allowing you to, to share this with me. Um, all readiness. The word readiness, it means alacrity, that big word, if you never know it. Like me, it literally means brisk, active and energetic and cheerful readiness. So this, the readiness with which they gave ear to what was being said was an active readiness, active and energetic. They put energy in regards to, in how they listened, in how they gave ear to what was being said. This wasn't just a sit-down and like, okay, man, I lock my ears. This was a, I am trying with effort to hear what you have to say. And it says cheerful, pleasantly. My attitude is, is not sour, my, my disposition is not um disgruntled. I, my, I am open, I am ready, I am excited at the opportunity to hear from the word and to see if there is validity to what you have to say. It speaks to this briskness, speaks to willingness of mind and zeal. So the energy is zealous and the mentality is willing. I want to see if this is so. Let's jump ahead. And it says, and search the scriptures daily. The word search here means to scrutinize. So a lot of the times when we think of the word search there, you know, it does go through. The um, the person say, or look at Acts chapter five, and our mentality is, okay, let me flip to Acts chapter five, and I have now searched the scripture. That is not the case at all. It means to examine or inspect closely and thoroughly, to investigate or to sift. And the idea of sifting is to separate the good from the bad. So that's essentially what they were doing, was they were seeing if what is being said based on scripture is good or bad. What a lot of people don't, a lot of the times we use this passage to speak to following in our Bible with what is being said by the preacher. But what a lot of us forget is that these burialists had no New Testament. The scriptures that they were searching was Old Testament. So they were looking at the prophecies that were made, read Jesus, to see if what Paul and Silas were saying was true. That is a different kind of searching. We're not talking about me, say, John chapter six, verse four, and you go look for John chapter six, verse four, and then say, yep. What Stephen read up there was, was indeed John chapter six, verse four. No, I'm talking about Paul saying, Moses said, this is the archetype. I mean, Noah, that Noah, Noah's art is the archetype to Jesus' death. And then they go and search through the Old Testament and say, okay, see, here, here's what is being said about the archetype, going to Isaiah and seeing the prophecies that are made about Jesus. That kind of scrutinizing, investigating, close inspection and examination, thorough. Searching, that is the way that it was done by the burialists. Wasn't, it wasn't just following, it was scrutinizing. And then it says daily. They searched the scriptures daily. Daily here, being a known, it means day. It is figuratively used as a period of time. So it doesn't necessarily mean that every day they were searching to find out if these things were true. But it speaks to the fact that this occurred regularly. This was not a one-time thing. It, it occurred on a, when need was there to search, they searched. And then it says, they searched daily with a particular intent, to find out whether these things were so. Not to prove a point, not to find a loophole, not to win a debate, not to justify self or their own action. They searched the scriptures daily to find out if the things Paul and Silas were saying were valid, were supported by scripture. And this, wh- when I, when I read this scripture, I know that we, we, we commend the burialists on a regular basis. But having gone through this scripture um mo- more intently, it, it, it blew me away as to the kind, the kinds of people that the burialists were. And from that, I, I broke down a few takeaway points that can help us to properly apply the burial and brain transplant. So firstly, the mentality should be open. So our mentality in receiving scripture, in hearing the word from others, should be open. And open here meaning free from bias, prejudice, and preconception. A lot of times, even amongst, it probably should be especially among Church of Christ. We hold, we hold to a lot of doctrine that we cannot necessarily defend from scripture. We have heard the scriptures read, we presume that the people who are reading the scripture are speaking validly, and thus that is our position. And sometimes if the thing is wrong, we are going to the grave with that as being right. Because we have not opened our mind to ensure that we are looking at things without bias, without prejudice, without preconception. Um, seeing some comments? Okay, um brother, brother Rowan said, can you, uh, give an example? Okay, alright, um. One of the big things is seven-day Sabbath. Keeping the Sabbath, should we keep the Sabbath or not? I presume that everyone who is a member of the Church of Christ conforms to the belief that we worship on Sunday. We are no longer, um, we're no longer bound by, or um we no longer serve under the ten commandments. I remember Alan did a very, very excellent study on the Sabbath and seven, um, the, the ten commandments, et cetera, why we are under the new covenant and not the old covenant. But how many of us know or have looked at the scriptures that support this? Have I personally seen where in the Bible and understood where in the Bible it explained why I am no longer under, under that law? And yes, as new Christians, Christians just coming in, these aren't things that can be expected to, to be known immediately. But what we have to be very careful of is the biases, prejudices, and preconceptions that we can bring in, especially for those or those who have been in the church for a long period of time and haven't at any point in time looked for these scriptures on their own. Sometimes when people are providing us with clarity in regards to things that we are doing wrong, we're not even willing to look in the Bible. Because as far as we are concerned, I know that this is right. I know that this is right. Man, I need, you don't even show me. You don't even tell me. I hear you, but you're wrong. And we're not going to the Bible. Because we have a bias, we have a prejudice, we have a preconception. And my, Mark, you know, it might, you might not be wrong. You might not be wrong. But that is not burial mentality. The burial mentality is I search the scripture to make sure it is so. That's the burial mentality. I'm not, I'm not operating off of my own, my own preconception. These people were Jews. They had their own bias and prejudice and pre-, well, ma- majority of them were Jews. The rest were Greeks. So they never, nobody here was sold on Christ. They clearly had their own biases and prejudices and preconceptions. However, their mentality was open. Well, not bias or prejudice. They had their own things that they believed. But because their mentality was open, they were willing to see if these things were, were actually so. Sometimes we're not willing to see, we're not willing to, to, to walk down the road to recognize if, okay, worst-case scenario, I support my belief. Best-case scenario, I now know that this is not what I should be doing. No, the mind locked. And it's a dangerous, dangerous, dangerous position to be in as a Christian. Where we reach a stage where we don't, we have a closed mind, closed-minded mentality, especially when it comes down to scripture. I've already found finished Bible class time too up. Let me just see if I can bring this up. Um, attitude, willing, marked by a desire to hear. And we saw this very clearly in um in the burialists, that they gave ear to the disciples. They with red, with all readiness, they received the word with all readiness. And I think sometimes we think that receive the word there meant accepting the word. No, it never reached the accept part yet. This was allowing them to speak, uh, being in a position to listen. Sometimes our mentality affects our willingness. So because I'm closed-minded, my attitude is unwilling. I don't want to hear what you have to say. And we have to be careful about the implications that, 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 that has on our own Christianity. If we are called to share, to, to present the word to others, what mentality would we like of them? A willing attitude and open mentality. Is it clear to expect that of others? And yet when people try to speak to us, our mentality is closed and our attitude is unwilling? Questions for us to answer. Motives, understanding. So an intent to rightly divide, a, a what at, I don't know who spelled that, but it's not me. An intent to rightly, rightly divide the word of truth. Whoever is hacking my slides, please, 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 this is. So an intent to rightly divide the word of truth, our motive should be to understand, not to, not to twist, not to justify, not to, 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 to go about doing things to, to, to make us feel better. It should be understanding, and our actions should be diligent, displayed through consistent and deliberate study of the scriptures. Sometimes we have the mindset, the open-mindedness, the willingness, we want to understand, but we're not willing to put out the word. I, I see a comment where it's, that Sandra says, um, the unresolved issue of head covering. I know definitively, for me personally, this is one of those where the action, the action is, is a problem. I think that to figure this out, it takes a whole leap of work and I am going to be honest, I have been disinclined to that kind of work. And that's clearly not the kind of attitude that I should have. That's not the kind of action that I should display. If, if I genuinely want to rightly divide the word of truth, as written here, I, I have to be this, have to display consistent and deliberate study. And a lot of the times, we look at study as generic, but if, as we see from the burial and passage, they studied the scripture to see if what Paul and Silas said was true. If we want to figure out if things are true, we need to study deliberately. If we want to figure out if things are true, we need to study deliberately and pointedly. Sadly, and I speak personally first, not throwing this on anybody else. Sometimes, especially when you feel like the subject matter is a difficult one to understand. The diligence goes through the window, and it's something that I have to work on, and it's something that I encourage. If you struggle with it, that a part of overcoming scatter brain syndrome. Is through getting access to what the true path is, and that takes. Biblical diligence in study, alright, um. Thank you for all the participation, excellent class as per usual, um. The password for Sunday's class is. Burial and brain transplant, burial and brain transplant, so, um. That is, that's it for this evening's class, I will now hand over to whoever is doing the closing.
Brother Stephen?
Yes, go ahead, brother Andre.
Um, I I couldn't find the hand raised thing, sorry. Just a point to note that, that, um. As it relates to what they were stu- um, what they were studying is not, um, equally remembered that the writings of Paul. Was equally being circulated, that's why the letters, so there are letters to the church, you know, letters to the, so the, so so. It 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 is not exclusive with the old.
Old Testament, okay, okay, good, good point, brother Andre, alright, so, um, so clarification. That what was being studied wasn't necessarily just Old Testament, but would have also been little that Paul would have. Um, would have aligned, what we can take from that though is that we are in a much better position. Having the word of God in its entirety, there's nothing lacking from our study. So we, when we are seeking truth, we have a complete body, and that means that whatever we need. Is in there, we just need to make sure that we we are diligent in studying, alright, thanks, handing over to the person for closing.